Hello, everyone. I'm Mayor Jay Wagner. This is the November 2 regular meeting of the High Point City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone who's present and also all those who are listening virtually. At this point, I normally call the roll of everyone here, but I can see that everyone is present. All nine members of council here are present in the room. Madam Attorney, do I actually have to call the roll? I just acknowledge that they're all here. We're gonna, I'm gonna save a little time, or maybe I'm talking too much, but we're gonna acknowledge that all nine members of council are physically present in the room and that quorum is present for the meeting. At this time, I would like for everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer and then our, I would ask our Boy Scout, Ian Woody, who was with us today, he is gonna come up and lead us following the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Now begin the moment of silence. Amen. All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm just gonna ask our scout to stay right where he is because he is gonna be recognized. Ian Woody is from Scout Troop 20, which is sponsored by First Presbyterian Church. He is receiving his Eagle Scout Award and for his Eagle Scout project, Ian partnered with the High Point Parks and Rec and High Point Transportation Department to install some enhanced handicap parking signs at several of the Parks and Rec facilities. And I will turn the meeting over now and Ian can maybe explain to us what he did and we can acknowledge his good service.
So for my project, I went and as you can see, I put a sign on the existing handicap parking signs in certain locations, like the Color Senior Center, to, you know, make people think twice before parking in handicap parking space when they don't need to.
All right, so a little bit of the process behind it was we would go to these centers after getting these signs printed out by people over at Parks and Rec. And we would go to the center and with some people from our troop, attach them to the posts that have been extended thanks to the Parks and Rec area and bolt them down, make sure they're tight, and have them up.
Well, Ian, I have for you a letter of recognition and a letter of congratulations from me thanking you for contributing your project to the, our Parks and Rec and Transportation Departments. And I want you to know that I really appreciate what you did and your service to the city of High Point and congratulations on receiving your Eagle Scout Award. Come over here, I'll hand it to you. How about that? Cover my face.
Can they do, still get a picture?
I bet we can get a picture.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm gonna come out and we'll get a, we'll hold our breath and get a picture. Well, I got a mask somewhere. I'm not, I'm not taking a picture with a mask, no.
Just stay six feet apart.
Also, this is, there's also a recognition I would like to read for National Apprentice Week. So here goes. Whereas National Apprentice Week is celebrating its sixth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role apprenticeships provide in creating a qualified and highly skilled workforce in diverse industries in High Point and across the nation. And whereas the advancement and well-being of the United States of America depends upon the continued development of skilled workers in their chosen fields, and whereas an ever-growing number of job creators and job seekers are discovering the benefits of apprenticeship's unique "learn while you earn" model. And whereas the city of High Point recognizes that robust apprenticeship programs provide tangible value to both job creators and apprentices with the potential to increase productivity, improve diversity and inclusion, and reduce recruitment and training costs while providing a pathway to prosperous careers for job seekers. And whereas the city of High Point was the first municipality to participate in the Guilford Apprenticeship Partners Program and currently has two apprentices assigned to the Fleet Services Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of High Point that it does declare November 8 through 14, 2020 as National Apprenticeship Week.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is Eric Almetto, Assistant City Manager. We wanted to take this opportunity of the National Apprenticeship Week to, as you just proclaimed, remind you that we do have two apprentices with the city of High Point. They're, they're in the back of the room. We have Wyatt Marica and Perry Sharp with us from the Fleet Services Department. We wanted to introduce you to them. According to Gary Smith, who's with them, they're doing a fantastic, this isn't a job evaluation, but they are doing a fantastic job. They're very enthusiastic and they've not only brought a lot of energy to our, they brought a lot of energy, but also they're passing that energy on to our staff who are training them. We also wanted to point out that, you know, that we were the first municipality in Guilford County to sign up. We hope to really expand this program. We're hoping that we can get past COVID and, and have some more apprentices with us. I also wanted to point out that, you know, this is a new thing. Our HR department and Angela Kirkwood and her folks have really stepped up to make this happen. This isn't a normal hiring process, so we just want to thank everybody involved and, and really look forward to this program and the success that we're gonna have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next on the agenda is a strategic, our strategic plan update. I believe everyone was emailed a, the copy of the strategic plan update regarding our blight reduction efforts. So I won't go into that. Everybody here, I believe, has had an opportunity to receive and review that. Unless...
Hey, did you wanna, yeah.
You wanna?
Let Laurie do it.
Okay, we'll let Laurie do it.
We have good news to share, so of course.
Looks like the two houses you...
It's good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to share because I like sharing good news. And so we had actually two houses during COVID. We do have people who are still working on houses and getting them repaired, so I just wanted to share that. This is a house down on Green that I just remember, happened to remember the story of this with the inspector when they found it unsecured and police came and had the dogs run through it to make sure it was empty so that they could go in and do an inspection. But that's what it looked like when we began our inspection and this is what it looks like now. The owner, it's gonna be owner occupied, they pulled the permits and made repairs. As you can see, there's still a few little things that need to tweak, but this is the inside of it. And as I said, the owner is gonna live in it, so that's a plus to that. Another property we had, this is down on Wheeler, it's, there's four, I think it's four houses down on that street. It's kind of a out-of-the-way street, nobody really goes to it. We had a lot of dumping issues there, as you can see. And as you can see, the house was unsecured. But I believe three of the four are completed. I think there's one more left, but this is, as you can see, one house on that side that was already completed, but this is the one they just completed at 327 in the inside of it, and this is gonna be rental property, then they made repairs to. And that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. For those listening online, first of all, Madam Clerk, have we received any public comments from anyone electronically?
We have not.
Okay. If you want to, if you're listening online and you would like to submit a public comment, we do receive public comment at the first meeting of each month. You can do that through either calling 336-883-3522 and leave a message, or you can email written comments to publiccomment@highpointnc.gov, or you can drop your written comments off at City Hall in the, either of the utility payment drop boxes on both sides of City Hall. There is one person who came to the meeting tonight wishing to speak, and I'm gonna allow it, although don't really wanna get into that habit, but I am gonna allow it under these circumstances. So sir, if you'd like to come forward, if you'll just come to the podium, give us your name and your address, you'll have three minutes for a public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bruce Klaudfelter. I own a property, a vacant lot at 1022 Ashborough Street. 1022 Ashborough Street. I've owned this property for approximately 25 years or so, been paying taxes. I inherited the property from my family, had no problems with the property until the last few months with changes of personnel. Received a letter approximately six months ago to clean up a, cleaned up the vacant lot, which I did. I approached the tenant next door, if he would clean it up, I would pay him. He did. I paid him $40. Heard no more out of it. And then within the past two months, I received a letter for cleanup of the property for $1,200. I don't know what happened, had no notification, nothing. I don't, I don't know what was placed on the lot. Tenant didn't complain, so a little bit of a loss in how I got $1,200 worth of damages on a 50-foot lot. Now, I did go down and inspect the property and found that they did go a little farther down on the property lines and cleaned out a ditch at the rear of the property, which is not my property. So I don't know what they found on the property. I've talked to no one about this, but I just thought, I think $1,200 was a little bit excessive. I've tried to give the property away to different agencies that build and buy and houses, habitat, and those people got no response, many of them. I have found that this is probably a non-buildable lot. It drops off very quickly from the curb. I consider it a gutter. If it was buildable lot, I'm a builder, I would've built something on it, but I've been paying taxes on it for over 25 years, no problem, everything's fine. Tax value on it this time is $1,500, an amount of $20.57, which I plan to pay. But my accounting system does not allow me, or we don't have the funds to pay the $1,200 for the cleanup of the lot, which I've been advised I can do two things. I can let it go into foreclosure or let it go back and give it to the county, which I would be happy to do in either case. I will be glad to pay something for maintenance of the lot, but I do feel that 1,900 or 1,200, excuse me, is a little excessive. I have been through this, I've owned over 400 properties in this town, and I've been through this many times with the city cleaning up properties, which I was able to work out with the city manager, Mr. Illard Yarber, when he was your assistant, assistant city manager many, many years ago. 1,200, one was 19, we, I think we got down to $100 and $200 on some of them, but we were able to settle them up without coming to council. I just hope you'll give me some assistance on that. $1,200, I feel like is a little bit excessive for a 50-foot lot. I don't know what was placed on the lot after I cleaned it up, looked after it, inspected it, paid the gentleman for doing the work, and here I am tonight. I got a bill for $1,200, which is now due in payable. So I hope you all have some mercy on me and see...
What I'll, what I'll ask is that you speak with Ms. Luce Moore, that's her department, and we'll see, I don't know, Laurie, what documentation you may have on the cleanup of his lot, but if you'll, if you'll have some contact with Mr. Klaudfelter, that'd be good.
Okay. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you. Okay. So next item on the agenda then is the Finance Committee portion, and for that, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Britt Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And for you tonight, I'm sure you've had it in your packets to review. All members of our committee met on a regular scheduled date. All items were presented, questions answered, and this is all-in-one consent agenda from 2020-410 through 2020-420. Bring it tonight with a favorable recommendation for approval.
Okay. Then there's a motion by Councilmember Moore for approval of the Finance Committee Agenda Items. I believe it was suggested by Councilman Wesley Hudson. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, I'll now call the roll for the vote. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And Mayor votes aye. So the Finance Committee Agenda Items are approved by a unanimous vote of nine to zero.
That's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next is the Prosperity and Liveability Committee Items, and for that, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Wesley Hudson, Chair of Prosperity, Prosperity and Liveability. We have two groups with us tonight from High Point University who will be presenting several project recommendations for us. You should have packets on your, on the dice. The first group is the Greenway Extender Project, and as you come to the, to the podium, I will ask that before you speak, you say your name so that our virtual audience will know who's talking and we can have your name for the record as well.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
You can take your mask off, it's okay.
My name is Ally Darpino.
My name's Sydney Kerr.
My name is Mackenzie Martin.
Danielle Milich.
I'm Jack Einer. Nice to meet you guys.
And we are the Greenway Extenders. We are partnering, partnering with the Southwest Renewal Foundation to advocate for the Phase 3 extension of the Greenway. The Phase 3 of the extension of the Greenway would run from Vale to West Ward down Castle Street, and it would be a component in the South Side neighborhood. We feel that in order, that the Phase 3 of the Greenway would be a great way to use an under, underutilized segment of our city in order to attract businesses, make it more walkable and safe, and hopefully attract and retain young professionals to live in High Point and start their lives and careers here. We feel that this extension of the Greenway will make High Point a better place, more livable, and allow it to prosper. Some benefits of the Greenway that we feel will be very ideal, where that would make it more walkable and safe. We have visited the Greenway, and it is a one-way street, and most people walk on it anyway from the South Side neighborhood in order to get to the transportation system, the elementary school, the recreational center, and High Point Medical Center as well. This Greenway would also allow for, to attract new businesses such as foot traffic businesses like coffee shops and donut shops, and it will give the South Side neighborhood a way to connect to the High Point city on the other side and bring the city together and as well make it more safe and walkable and prosper, because the South Side neighborhood would be able to have easy access to all the other amenities on the other side of campus, of the community.
Another benefit we wanted to talk about was that the extension would raise overall quality of life to the community of High Point while also improving, excuse me, the environmental health by providing cleaner water and improved air quality. The Greenway would also help the residents of High Point, you know, sorry, excuse me, live a healthier lifestyle, both physically and mentally. With the Greenway, we have obviously a path to walk, a path to bike, an area to exercise, which is both good mentally and physically. Basketball courts, you can walk your pets there, and it would just be a way to bring the community of High Point University and the community of High Point, the city, together. So, yeah, thank you.
One of the really great things about this phase of the Greenway is that the road is already there, so the construction of it is rather straightforward. The sidewalk needs to be extended a bit so that it coincides with where the roundabout ends, and then lines need to be painted onto the street and some safety barriers need to be put up so that cars stay where they need to be and people stay where they need to be.
Hi, I'm Sydney. I know you said this before, but so the total cost is $82,009.38, to be exact. And just for a little bit of more what the construction would entail would be four handicap ramps, a couple of short segments of curbing and sidewalking, restripping of the roadway to outline the Greenway, like she said, with the lines, and then just some safety measures to protect the Greenway users. And then on page 12 of the white paper, there's a whole breakdown of the costs with like the quantity, the unit price, and then the total. So a little bit more about that is the mobilization costs is the one-time costs that contractors use just to cover the cost of moving the equipments and the materials to the actual site. And there's the 15% contingency cover, cost just to cover the unexpected with like the material and labor inflation, and then there's just traffic control to protect the workers for anything that may happen. And then this would, the funds would come from the High Point Department of Transportation, and it would be for the 2021, '22 budget year.
The good part is that we've seen this work before, both in large scales in cities like New York and in smaller scales like in Apex, North Carolina. In New York City, they built the High Line, they refurbished it, they fixed it up, and within the first couple of years, they made about $2 billion in new developments. So we've seen that this can be feasible. Smaller cities have seen similar developments with new walking businesses, like we said before, of coffee shops, smaller businesses, stuff that needs foot traffic. You need to be able to get there, you need to be able to walk to it. And so having these in place helps those. In Apex, North Carolina, with the regional Greenway being built there, it brought the housing market up, $5,000 for each house that was adjacent to the Greenway, and those are the first houses to be sold. They go on the market, they're almost immediately pulled off because people want to be near those areas. Cities are starting to recognize that parks are vital and essential to the economic development of the city, but building a park by itself, isolated, doesn't help anyone. You need to connect that park to the rest of the construction that's around you as you prepare to develop and redevelop the cities that you're in. So it needs to be part of the framework, and with the Greenway going through the city, you are, you've fully connected it to that framework. So this is the next step for making the city better.
As you can see from all of our points and benefits, the Phase 3 of the extension of the Greenway would be a one-time investment into the South Side neighborhood's future in the city of High Point. What young professionals are looking for is a walkable and safe city, and the Greenway provides that. And if, I know the city of High Point is really wanting to bring in those young professionals and have them start their lives here. So by creating the Phase 3 of the extension of the Greenway, it will connect the communities together, make the community prosper, both the South Side community and the rest of the High, city of High Point community prosper, and it would attain young professionals so they can, and build the city up and connect those two communities together. Thank you.
Thank you all. Any questions for the group from council?
Great job.
Yes, great job.
Most Councilmen Hudson and I met with them, and I thought one of the cooler things that we discussed when we talked there, talking about retaining young professionals, I think all but one of you, I know you're moving back to New York, but all but one of you was saying they were gonna stay local to this North Carolina area, to our local economy. So I think it's, you know, Monica's the one that did all that, to make it to where you guys wanna stay here, so.
Thank you, Victor.
They do have a heart for improving this community, and so they're thinking along the right path, the way we think on a constant basis, what we can, what can we do to retain young talent, retain young professionals for our job base and workforce. So great presentation, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And this group will be at the Prosperity and Liveability Committee meeting at 9:00 Wednesday to further present this, if anybody'd like to join in online or in person. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
So our next, our next group also from High Point University is a Blue Lit Road Project, and I'll let them explain their concept.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Parker Farabee.
Penn Kostler.
Hannah Guttenstein.
Kimberly Jenkins.
And Val Maya.
We would like to thank everyone who took the time to meet with us already. We are a group of High Point University students who would like to implement a blue light system in High Point. Overall, this would make the city a much more walkable place. In Phase 1, we want to implement four blue lights, and these would be in areas of downtown with the most foot traffic. In later stages, we want to implement even more blue lights, and it would be connected to the stadium, creating a more walkable experience for members of our community. Now I'm gonna let Penn and Kimmy talk about implementation and finances.
So for the first phase, we would like to implement four, as Parker's told us before. So the first two are the first four, excuse me, would be on Main Street, one on the bus stop of Rock Spring Road, and one on Guilford Avenue, as you can see right here. The first phase is, like she said again, more foot traffic, besides just the benefit of safety, more foot traffic, which would possibly, most likely, bring in more revenue into local businesses, as I'm personally always down two, three, four times a week, always down on Main Street, always at the local businesses and everything. For the second phase, as she said again, we'd be bringing it down to downtown and have more foot traffic there, as it's slower since there's not as much lighting and just implementation of safety, as I say, down there. But for the second phase, we would want to have more down there.
So now I'm gonna talk about the costs. So in the packet we gave you, there's a bunch of different models, and I based off what High Point uses, and they use the vendor talkophone. So I was in contact with High Point Security, and the cost varies from $6,000 to around $1,000, and that's for just the stand poles. And then there's also boxes that you can put on walls or buildings for, like for restaurants, that's a call box. So that varies from like $1,000 to $650, and they all come with different amenities. So there's SIM cards, video recording, some make noises, some flashlights. So it really just depends what you wanna do and what you guys decide on the models you want. And then from there is also the maintenance. So maintenance is usually around $200, and they, the provider they use comes and checks every two to three weeks, so you won't, so you always know like it's gonna be like looked upon. And then also, if you decide to do the stand poles, I go into a further breakdown of the drilling, so the inch of holes and how much those cost as well. And usually the warranty, the...
And usually the warranty, the guy I talked to, he told me it's like eight to 10 years. So they're pretty reliable what they do. And again, there's the maintenance.
So our overall hope with this project is to create a feeling of safety in our community, decrease crime rate, and also keep young professionals around after graduation in order to generate more jobs and help our economy grow. So thank you for your time.
And me and Val, hi, I'm Hannah, would love to take your guys' questions.
It's Councilman Holmes. High Point University uses a similar system?
Yes.
Is that, is where the idea was generated from, from the system that you use on campus?
So being that High Point University brings a lot of people to the community and kind of builds a lot on the community revenue and, you know, gives back to the businesses, we kind of wanted to extend that feeling of safety that we have on campus to the general area. And we thought, what better place than downtown where we know a lot of people, both students and citizens alike, like to go and spend their social time. And we feel that when people feel safe and comfortable to walk, for example, to their car at night, or to meet up with their friends, or even just go to a different restaurant, they're more likely to go back to those places, adding more revenue to those businesses, and would do the overall goal, which is like stay in the area.
This is Councilman Moore. I was able to meet with the Greenway extenders in person, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. I was unable, although we exchanged some emails, too, our schedules didn't work to meet with you guys, and I apologize for that. Are you following a blueprint of this from other places? I know you have it at the university. We hear more from them about other cities.
So a couple of other cities have also done this. Grand Rapids is one of them. Greenville, North Carolina has also implemented these blue lights around their downtown areas. And so far, from what we've been able to tell, we're still in contact with those places, but they have been successful.
I was in Chapel Hill this weekend, and I noticed that they did have them in some of the residential areas, close to campus in Chapel Hill as well, and in downtown.
Yeah, it's very common for them to kind of bleed out of universities, especially ones that aren't, you know, gated like High Point. And I think that also goes to benefit the community as well.
I'll just close, thank you for the presentation, but I will thank you personally for your passion and your advocacy and your professionalism, which I would expect nothing less out of High Point University under the leadership of Dr. Kubain. But, you know, I look forward to looking more into this as we go, and hopefully we'll see some great progress, and you guys will take it on after I'm on the way.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I will say that both of these, because they're kind of different in nature, we'll be following up. The Greenway extenders will be presenting to the P and L committee based on the nature of what they're doing. And I've asked our intercity manager to put on my committee, which is Public Safety Committee, opportunity for you to bring this up to a committee, because typically with something like this, rather than us deal with it in an actual council meeting, we'll sign it to an actual committee so we can get a little more research on it. You know, one of the things I emailed Penn about was, you know, I'd like to see the numbers of calls for service for the police department in those particular areas. Are they really high traffic? Are they really a problem area for us? If so, does it justify the expense? So we'll be able to ask those kind of questions in that committee, and then just see if this has legs.
Yeah. Mayor Wagner, I think it's awesome having both these groups come in this evening, and much to the credit of High Point University and obviously the leadership of Dr. Kubain. I'm also inclined to mention the leadership of Dr. Lenore, who's their professor. I know you want to sit quiet and not say anything, but I love the idea of this class and you having the students come in. The only thing I was bummed out about is that in our meeting with this group, I probably spent 10 minutes going on about numbers and who are you getting data from, and who are you calling, and who are you measuring this against, and all this other good stuff. I said, awesome, this next six months, we've got a lot of work to do together. And they all looked around and looked at me and said, Rob, this class in two weeks. And so the only thing that bummed me out about is that it's only one semester long. So if I had one wish, Dr. Lenore, is that this could be a year-long class, that way we could work with these great scholars. Because I, I think it's awesome, them taking a stake in the community and using their great innovative skills and intelligence, and I think compassionate commitment to want to do something. So kudos to you all.
Thank you.
Well done.
Just one little quick statement. Thank you for your time for both groups. Our strategic goals have evolved with this body, but it still covers the, I'm not going to say what the old term was, but maintaining or retention of our young professionals, that's what I say instead of young. And the other part is so far as it's life remediation, and actually fits in the third part with more development of our downtown. So thank you all, convince more of your friends to stay if you would, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If nothing further, thank you, Dr. Brandon Lenore, as well, for bringing this group in. Thank you, group, for presenting. We look forward to seeing you in committee, and nothing further from P and L, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda will be the Community Development Committee portion, and for that, I will turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item up is item 2024-21 ordinance, demolition of dwelling 1503 Bridges Avenue, adoption of the ordinance. I will turn it over to Lori.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. 1503 Bridges Drive was a property we originally inspected November 14th of 2016. Elks Carpet Outlet, Inc. is a dissolved company, no longer with representation, recordings of the court, Secretary of State, excuse me. And it was a previous case from software. We had some issues with it, that's why it was so old. We did have to advertise this, excuse me, let me back up. There were some issues with it because the owner was living at one point, and then he, even though the company was dissolved, and then he passed. So we've had notification issues, but we did get notifications through the registered agent with the company. We held a hearing on February 27th of 2020, no one appeared for the hearing, and it was determined that the repairs exceed 65% of the value of the property, and we issued an order to repair or demolish with a compliance date of April 3rd of 2020. They all are also delinquent in the amount of $5,343 in property taxes for 2017, 18, 19, and 20. And we have not heard from anyone regarding the property repairs or anything they plan to do with it.
Any questions for staff? For the record, I'll ask the clerk, did we receive here anything from anyone for or against this order?
We have not.
In that case, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2024-21 ordinance, demolition of dwelling 1503 Bridges Avenue.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilman Big Jones, I believe. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll now take the roll, vote in favor as a vote to approve the demolition. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And the mayor votes aye. So that motion and ordinance is approved by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next up is item 2024-22 ordinance, demolition of dwelling 711 Hines Street. After a conversation with staff, and I'll turn it over to her, I will, would like to make a motion to put this in pending, but I'll let staff explain.
This was, the house at 711 Hines was a property that they made some pretty good repairs on the exterior of the house. There's still some work on the interior that needs to be done, but they did come in on Friday. We met, we agreed to a, basically a 30-day time that they're supposed to be called and getting. They claim that they've made all the, the work has been completed, they just have not done any of the inspections and not called any in since March. So I'm just going to ask to put it in pending for 30 days to allow us to work with the owner to see if they can get things on track and hopefully get the house repaired.
Is there any questions for staff? Over my pending motion, Mayor?
Okay, so there's, there's a motion then to place this item in pending. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wesley Hudson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And the mayor votes aye. So this item, motion to place this item in pending has been approved by a vote of nine to zero.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Can I, can I make one statement?
Sure.
Sorry. We did tell the 711 Hines, and just as a general overall, what we do before we bring a case before you all, is we do give the owners heads up that we're going to be bringing it before council. They were told in March. They sometimes just don't believe this until they get the letter. And so we do our best to work with them before it gets to this point. Just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are the planning and development items, and I'll be handling those. The first one is a resolution intent for a, to establish a public hearing on November 16th for a voluntary non-contiguous annexation. And I move for approval of the public hearing. Is there a second? Seconded, I believe, by Councilman Cyril Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And the mayor votes aye. So that item, we'll have, hold a public hearing on that item November 16th. That motion is approved. We have two items that are continued public hearings. These have been, these were actually heard on Monday, August 17th at our meeting then, and then the, it's been continued since then. I guess you have an update for us, Mr. Shannon?
Very brief.
Okay.
As you had noted, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Herb Shannon, Senior Planner of the Planning and Development Department. As you had noted, these items were both initially reviewed at the August 17th public hearing. At that meeting, staff provided an overview and outlined a recommendation of approval of both the annexation and rezoning. I just wanted to show you the map, just refresh your memory as to location for annexation case 2005 and zoning amendment 2013. There is nothing additional staff wanted to add to our presentation. I do believe the applicant would like to do their presentation regarding this request. So unless there's some questions for staff, I believe the applicant's representative has a brief presentation for you.
Okay, thank you. Is that coming in remotely?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Judy Stalder.
Hello, Judy.
Hey, I'm 37, 35, Admiral Drive in High Point. And also listening in this evening is Brian Spain from UMA Geotechnical Construction. UMA is asking for this annexation and rezoning so that they can move and expand their business. It's currently operating in green, on a property nearby, but across the line in Greensboro. And I know it's been about 100 years since the staff, you know, in 2020 times since the staff presented this request, so I wanted to give you a quick summary. UMA wants to develop the property with offices, equipment storage, and a place for employees to park while working offsite. The operations on the site itself will be rather low-profile because all the physical work is done on job sites throughout the Southeast US. And to ensure higher development standards, UMA is proposing conditions that limit the uses and outdoor storage, and they will provide a perimeter landscape screen to protect adjacent property and public rights away. This request is supported by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we ask for your approval as well, and want to thank you for bearing with us while we continued this case a couple of times, just to make sure that we got through all the due diligence before getting it annexed.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Okay, hearing none. Have we received any additional public comments on this, Madam Clerk?
We have not.
Okay, this item will remain open for, for comments pursuant to the public hearing for a period of 24 hours, and City Council will be taking action on this item at our meeting on Wednesday, November 4th at 5:30. Okay. We just have a couple of items under the General Business Agenda. The first is the waiver of conflict for Jonathan Fine. I think we've been briefed on this. Madam Attorney, do you have anything else you'd like to present to council on this item? Or does anyone have any questions?
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. If not, then I will go ahead and make the motion for approval of this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Peters. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. So that, that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. We do have one item that we need to add to the agenda, and to do that, I'll need a motion to suspend the rules. This is, the item is a, just a, I think a one-word tweak to the personnel policy. Isn't that right?
That is correct.
So that's, but the motion will be a motion to suspend the rules, and I, I make the motion to suspend the rules to add that item. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Cyril Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? This is not the motion to approve the change. Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So the motion to suspend the rules to add the item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Now this is just a, an amendment to the personnel resolution, and it, my understanding is that it says that the new employee orientation is to be held bi-weekly instead of monthly. That's the only?
I can give you just a tiny bit of history, some of it, which you are already aware. A week ago today, I think it was the 26th, and the HR Director and me attorneys met to go over documents, looking at the revisions to personnel resolutions, especially that section four. And then you guys actually addressed that last Wednesday, the 28th. There was no discussion at that time, and the HR Director was not able to present something that she had found. Manager and I met with her this morning, and she pointed out that this change was not called, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. It's just a little technical change to reflect what it should have been in the first place.
Exactly. And a reminder, too, that we will be continuing to go through the rest of the document, and I've asked the HR Director to continue to work with their outside counsel and be in main contact with that.
Okay. Thank you, Angela, for catching that.
Yeah. And I'd like to apologize, we didn't know that you were ready to present, so we apologize for anything that happened last week. So thank you for.
Okay, so I might go ahead and make the motion then for the approval of that technical change. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, I think, Tyron Johnson. Any discussion on this change? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, so that amendment is approved by a vote of nine to zero. We have some minutes that need to be approved. I'll entertain a motion or if anyone has any questions.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion approved by Wesley. And there's a motion approved by Wesley Hudson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Williams. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, so the minutes are approved by a vote of nine to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, Ray.
Hold up. There's, there is a motion on the floor to, to adjourn, seconded by Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Williams. Any discussion? Anything that needs to be brought up before we adjourn?
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, members of council. We were able to, without incident, add an employee to our team from business High Point, so we'd like at this time, oh, there she is.
She needs no introduction.
The artist formerly known as Sarah Tate, now Sarah Stevenson, congratulations. Last month, she is joining our team as one of our communication specialists. She's going to assist us with, first and foremost, with some of the marketing efforts for the theater, and in time, help us with some of our other cultural, cultural arts offerings in the city. So, we just wanted to take this time to officially introduce her as a member of our team and a City of High Point employee.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jaron, thank you for that, and council, thank you for your vision and your leadership of this city. It is inspiring. I am honored and humbled to be here. We've got a lot to do, and I'll see you guys often.
You know, it's not often that one of our partners in the community ends up losing an asset, and I'm okay, and as a matter of fact, happy about it. But today is one of those moments, because I couldn't be more thrilled for S B to be a member of the team, so, welcome.
Thank you.
I told them when I've learned about it, that I was both sad and happy at the same time. All right, excellent. Is any, anything else to be announced? Don't forget to vote tomorrow if you have- Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to say, yes, in yesterday's obituaries, Rumel Prangley has, has passed away, and Rumel is a consummate writer of letters to the High Point Enterprise, so we didn't agree very often, but I have enjoyed years and years reading her letters and condolences to her family.
And, and in that same vein, thank you, because you made me remember former Mayor Roy Culler.
Yes.
Who was a longtime mayor, a longtime council member of this municipality. Who had very visionary leadership, led a lot of strategic change here, and has a legacy, I think, that is known and notable to many. He passed away in his past couple of weeks, and so condolences to him and his family, and, and I, I think the city of High Point as a whole, you know, celebrates the honor of his legacy.
Absolutely. Mayor Culler was the, was the man I, he was the, well, first time I ever heard the term mayor, he was the bear, you know? And he, we attended church together, and I know, I knew him going, going way back, and whenever I thought of a mayor, I think of Roy Culler, you know? So, and, and it's, it's do note, it's, should be noted also, that his, his wife passed a few days after he did. So, you know, we, we need to keep the, the Culler family in their, in our prayers and, and thoughts.